We're continuing you.
First, we're gonna open our.
Yeah, we're gonna open ours.
We're gonna go slightly out of order. The first item on the agenda is gonna be a subdivision plan for Dean Gibson and East Coast Industrial Properties, west side of Perkins Pond Road. And they have asked for a continuance. If somebody would like to make a motion.
I so will.
I'll point him.
I don't need to yet.
I can't vote on your.
That's okay. Chuck made a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second item on the agenda is Coal Springs. I'm stepping down so Bruce can go ahead and point to it.
Need help with anything?
Yep.
Do you need a piece of paper?
No, I'm gonna go off of that and need to, I mean, a good lock.
But we're missing a recording secretary or a printmaker. John's gonna fill in that also.
To the best of my ability.
Okay. We've got a continuation of the site plan for Coal Springs RV, for RV repair and RV storage.
Yes, hi. I'm Craig Francisco, now with Bedford Design Consultants. We were contracted with Coal Springs roughly a month and a half, month and three weeks ago, to finish this project. If you all recall, we had
Sixty-five.
Roughly square feet of buffer in the front was disturbed. A little bit of wetland buffer was disturbed here. A little bit of this buffer was disturbed. Another residential buffer. The buffer in the front has been loaned and seeded. This wetland buffer has been loaned and seeded. This has not yet because there's some water that flows out of this wetland that flows through here. So it's just too much to do anything right there yet. We've changed the plan around quite a bit since the last plan you saw. We have applied for the wetland permit across here. We get to the back portion of property. We should be getting something. I should be hearing something. We're gonna get approval on it in a week or two. AOT permits have been filed. I believe we're out about fifteen days before we hear that at DES. Septic system has been submitted. It's approved pending that we have to get the AOT permit before we get the septic permit. Basically what we did, we lowered the site about two feet. We twisted the building a little bit and split it up. Instead of the big infiltration chambers in here, we're catching the water in a series of catch basins, one, two, three, four into the pond. One, two, three more into the pond. With the discharge, there's a little bit of a, there's a natural Christmas tree, I'll call it, in this area, which will discharge. We do some grading on the Winter Wonders property. We submit the letter, the plans to Steve Keats for review. He came back and had twelve very minor things he wanted us to fix. We made a, we typed up his letter and added our responses. I have plan sets here that addresses his fourteen comments, I guess. Would you like to see some new plans? Very minor.
The floor probably had more changes on that.
Pardon?
The fourth page. Piece in the back.
Okay.
Craig has buried me in paper this week.
I'm on the press this morning. Basically, you go through those sheets. The first sheet, well, it's actually the second sheet because the first sheet's a cover sheet, but the second sheet is the site plan. It just shows how we can do some storage in here. Vehicles come in, parking the service canopy. Customers can drop them off out of the canopy. Then the employees can drive around, begin in the building and service them. We've got a little bit of area back here for storage of RVs. We show the snow storage areas and things like that in the site plan on that sheet. The third sheet is the same one I have up here colored up.
I believe?
Yes. The fourth sheet basically shows the back of the property. We aren't closing anything at this time. We will be coming in for the site plan to show RV storage in the back. But we aren't quite ready for that yet.
Okay.
That's a future phase.
That was, yeah, okay. Is there any note on the plan saying that you'll be coming back for that? Should we do that?
Yes. Mike want me to find it, right?
Yeah. Note three.
Note three, yes. The end of note three says, "Any future development beyond the proposed limit of pavement shown on this plan will require additional state approvals." The proposed edge of pavement is like very different.
Okay.
Page is that one?
Second page. Three.
You may remember from the site walk, you may not, because there was some smelling of the ground. There were some boulders placed along here. They've since been moved, so they're placed here. And there's boulders kind of scattered along the edges of this wetland buffer to keep people from falling snow and protect the buffer, basically. That's, get in a nutshell, the Reader's Digest condensed version of what happened in the last two months.
Were you proposing to put the down-facing lights on the building? I don't see them on the plan. Could they be added, please?
Yes, we can certainly add it. I don't see them either. You're right.
Apparently, you renumbered your catch bases, one through five, at one point?
Pardon?
So apparently, at one point, you renumbered your catch bases at one through five?
One, two, four, five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no number three?
Yeah, we had, yes. We had another one up here. Hold on. No, we had one up here, I'm sorry. We had one. We are in the offshore production district. I think everybody remembers that.
Yeah.
The drainage study shows we have about fourteen and a half CFS coming off the site currently. And after development, it'll be reduced on about eleven point three. That's a fifty-year storm. Or if we look at it another way, on a two-year storm, the runoff right now is a point four five seven acre feet. It's gonna be reduced to point three eight acre feet. So actually be more infiltration there is currently.
This is zone industrial, correct?
Yes. You give a copy of the sign? The place is out front. What will we run?
On the second page, and I haven't looked on the further pages, on the sign, maximum height sixteen feet. Or is my eyes deceiving me because I don't have glasses with me today?
And just was on, is that not allowed, sixteen?
I don't, we don't, I don't have the latest version of Article thirty-four. I can't remember what it was. But based off of the old one, the height of a freestanding sign shall not exceed ten feet from ground level to the top of the sign or from the centerline elevation of the road. I don't know if that got changed on the amended Article thirty-four.
Well, he's got seventy-six inches on this.
On that, but on this, it shows sixteen feet.
Yeah, no, I understand. If he's got seventy-six inches, maybe you change it sixteen feet to eighteen or something?
Well, if I say maximum height is sixteen feet, you go seventy-eight inches, we're okay.
Yeah.
But if sixteen feet is beyond?
Chip, he didn't have a, there's a company for?
Tom should have one right there.
Article thirty-four?
I believe the heights in the industrial zone are different than they are in all the rest.
I just can't remember if we changed it. That one's still showing the amended one from 2011, not the one we did two years ago.
Hold the four.
Seventy-six.
I would change the note to match the seventy-six inches.
Well, I mean, I'd just change it to whatever the legal limit is. No sense limiting yourself to this because I don't know, I don't know what's higher, seventy-six inches from the ground or seventy-six inches from the centerline of the road?
Pretty close. Pretty flat in there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yes. Still on roads a couple feet higher, probably, maybe.
Is that forty-foot turn radius coming in off coal road gonna be an offer, a travel trailer?
Yeah, because we're making the road thirty feet wide, so driveway's wider than the road.
Okay. Then the radius?
It's gonna be tight getting around the building.
Yeah, I see that.
Well, realize they're coming this way around the building.
But they're gonna be pulling back out.
Yeah, if you're going into this lane.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
As a memory refresher, Article thirty-four, ten point four point two. No part of any sign attached to a wall shall be higher than sixteen feet above grade. The height of a freestanding sign shall not exceed ten feet from ground level to the top of the sign. Amended three eight, two thousand and eleven.
Let me, there's another revision?
No.
I remember that was amended two years ago, I believe.
Remember, we had the sign subcommittee, John and I and Jack Dearborn and some other people were on it.
Revised March two thousand and sixteen. This is the latest, the greatest. It is the gospel according to Luke, Mark, Matthew, and John. See me on Sunday.
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
Max ten feet, please?
Sure. It's a hundred and twenty inches. That's more than seventy-six. We're good. I can do that math.
Okay. Maybe, maybe it didn't change. I thought we'd, okay.
The Lord says
I'm over in this side of the table.
Two thousand and sixteen revisions.
Either way, ten feet's fine for us.
You'll have to call Neil.
He wasn't part of that.
But he's the sign guru.
He was on some pretty.
I don't care.
The lights on the building sign. Got this letter from KNA. One okay, two's okay. Three is okay. You had all the radiuses there for that asphalt?
Oh, yes. Thirty, forty foot radius. The entrance twenty foot by the building. Yes.
Get a snowmobile easement?
Oh, shoot. Well, I read that to the engineer. I saw him type it in. Where is it?
Yes, I'm in by the wetland service, the wetland stamp.
I'm glad you see it. I don't see it.
Yeah, it's over beside the wetland stamp. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
That trail's not there yet, right?
Pardon?
I said that trail's not located there yet.
They have, they have an easement for a trail. Is there a trail there? No.
No.
It's woods.
Right. That's why I'm worried about it going through the twenty-five foot buffer.
You're allowed to cut trees in a buffer. A certain number of them, fifty percent of the basal area or something like that. Not the best place for a snowmobile trail, no.
No.
Looks like it actually cuts into the wetland right at the very corner of the property.
Yeah, it does.
Goes across the brook or goes across the wetland.
Yeah.
We have the sign. Is it harmful for forest or residential?
Is there no proposed lighting over in the, what appears to be the employee parking lot to the, to the northeast?
Nope.
There's no lighting supposed to be there?
That roof is gonna be pretty high there, right? It's gonna be?
Uh, twenty?
Yeah, twenty, twenty-four?
Yeah. If you have some light on the roof, they're probably almost lighting it up up there anyway.
I thought, I thought it was gonna be all downcast light, so it didn't shine.
When you're twenty-four feet high, it is gonna shine somewhat out.
Gonna broadcast out some. It won't be shining up, but I mean, even, even like the point straight down, twenty-four feet here is having.
Okay.
Reflection off the building and all those kind of things.
No, either's, we're just gonna wait until one is on, right? Get the one line on it?
Oh, shoot.
Five?
Complete spot.
Yeah, yes.
Water line in the underground utilities?
Yep. Eight. Yeah, that's what I think's up.
Roof could be irrigated.
HDP E pipe.
Craig, in the, in the winter wanderers lot, is that, they identified, I guess, the location of the original dump there, and that's all marked out?
Yes.
On that lot, yeah. So I would assume that that, there's one catch basin, and I guess it's almost on the line. That's, uh, yeah, right there. That's, that's no issue then with the?
Yeah, the dump's more over here.
Yeah?
I can show it on that plan, but it's, it's not that, it's not that close to that catch basin. There's a little valley through here. It's on the side of that. Shoot.
Yeah, we're gonna, something we can show them.
Catch basin there about here.
Yeah.
And this is the dump.
Oh, I see.
So it's probably.
The catch basin, how deep is that?
Six feet.
Six feet? That was the start of this, that's probably the shallow one, right?
Oh, you know how deep that one is? The six, most of it's salt.
Thank you.
On the page eight of eleven, sheet eight of eleven?
Yes.
You show chain link fence, detailed chain link fence, but I'm not seeing any fencing on?
It's around the dumpster.
Around the dumpster.
Is that where it is? Okay.
Yep.
Is that, that dumpster enclosure screen section?
I was gonna say, two details over in page eight, there's a dumpster enclosure detail with the eight foot chain link fence.
What's a Cape Cod burn?
It's asphalt.
Asphalt.
It's kind of like a clamshell sitting on top of the asphalt.
Yeah?
It's thin on the roadside, it's thick as a log. Looks like a clamshell hump.
What's it do?
Keep the water on the asphalt, going running off, contain it. And that special little asphalt, which you have to go around and do that, right underneath it, right on top of it.
It's like a speed bump.
Yeah, sort of, yeah. Is that Cape Cod burn for, for keeping the water on there?
Yeah, it's just, just in this area right here. Just in the entrance. Leave it, I'll take the other, move it right there, too. Mostly to make sure the water gets to the catch basin.
Yeah. The only drawback to those?
Is plowing.
Snow plows can damage them pretty heavily, pretty quickly. Um, is there any kind of a note on here saying that it needs to be maintained if it gets taken out by a plow? At least you get fixed, kind of thing?
Nope. There is not. Nor do I remember ever seeing such a note on any plant, but.
Most of the time, we see them underneath the guardrail, so they won't get whacked.
Well, I, I hope they aren't plowing this thing over that way. They might, I guess.
Yeah, you got that big area right there between your boulders and stuff, it could stop snowing, right? Yeah. Yeah. The rest of them won't get whacked, but if they're putting snow over it, have to be careful.
We have a little piece here. I can't say for sure, but if I was plowing, pushing snow back there, I'd be using the litter. I wouldn't be using the plow, but.
That's taking it even faster.
Not just picking it up and moving it.
You pick the bucket up before you go over the, over the.
It's part of the drainage design that is going.
Yep.
What's the purpose of the driveway that goes behind the building, across the wetland?
We're gonna do storage, store RVs over here.
Oh, okay.
The ones that are sold or unsold. But that's gonna be a phase two. We aren't gonna do that yet.
What kind of permitting does it take to, to achieve that crossing?
Wetland permit?
Yeah.
Oh, we had to take some photographs. We had to do a drainage report, size of culvert. Went to Conservation Commission, submit the permit. It should, I submitted it about a month ago, so I should be hearing any minute back. It's pretty, it's less than three thousand. It's only twenty, twenty-three hundred ninety square feet. If you get over ten thousand square feet, it's good, it's a lot more difficult. Plus, this was historically a woods road, so it was already used through here. We're just kind of widening an existing crossing.
Snowmobile trail.
Pardon?
And snowmobile trail.
And snowmobile trail, yeah. Still a snowmobile trail.
Any, I don't want to go up to public input, any buddy from the public that bothers having to add, comment, request? Seeing on before the public comment period. The permits, I mean, we need to address, I guess, the conditional use permit first.
Yes. Oh, I forgot to add that. I did submit a conditional use permit. We're actually at four, at nine point nine nine seven percent, by the way, if you take it, carry that. If you carry out the decimals long enough.
Yeah, I saw that.
We aren't quite to ten percent.
Plan here.
I didn't know what the number we were gonna be at when I submitted the permits.
So do we still need the conditional use permit or at nine point nine nine?
Not quite, but I'll take it. If you wanna give us an approval for a conditional use permit, I don't think my client would object. Didn't think so. Please.
Keats, Keats and Oshin are saying anything about that today. The, um, the drainage report was, was good.
Yeah, all you said about the drainage report was based on our, on our review of drainage report submitted by the applicants consultants. We are pleased to report that we take note of sections that consult methodology or conditions.
Everything's handled on site with stormwater and all that. Everything's handled on site with stormwater and all that.
Everything's going to that basin.
Yeah.
Most of it's going to the basin, not everything, but...
Not an aquifer zone. It's over ten percent impervious in the aquifer zone. That's what condition is, and what we've been doing with the... Sites on B and B Lane have been coming to us, they've been coming back with, trying to get them to handle stormwater on sites that just like shed off. Which is what they've done with this stormwater retention basin, infiltration basin. If they do anything over here, on the other side, when they, when they make that storage, they're obviously gonna have to do more retention basin structures over there to handle that area, 'cause they're not gonna cross the wetland for it, with the water.
They're gonna pump it.
You can pump it, yeah. But because they're so close to being the ten percent, if they...
If he paves a little extra, it'd be nice to have the permit.
If he paves six inches in one direction or another, he's probably gonna be over the ten percent.
Paving line slides out to here.
Of course, same motion on the conditional use permit, yeah.
Yeah, he's moving, he's moving, additional use permit.
One second. One second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Good. Now back to the site plan. Look what we've... What we're waiting for, a couple notes on the plan, sign limit, type, a note regarding the Cape Cod berm added to, oh, page two. Can you get another note on page two, about that there?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can fit another note, that's our problem.
And lighting in the building?
What do you want the note for Cape Cod berm to say?
Um, if any Cape Cod berm damage...
Must be repaired if damaged.
Winter activities that used to be repaired, this forced off brewery and string or something. Obviously, you can't, you're not gonna do what you're doing, but... You only do it once or twice, and as long as it can, and if it's something to do more careful. Here they are. Not the doors, eh?
What I'm working forward. One, one question, uh, was submitted by Cole Springs, and yet, this is, looks like it's another company, Pro RV?
DBA, it's a DBA.
It's a what?
It's a DBA.
Oh, doing business as, yes. But actually, the planning board has no control over what the sign says, so we could say Budweiser for sale.
I don't want control of that.
Cole Springs is still in landowner.
He's just making another business that's...
Yeah.
Actually seventeen oh two, Colby Road LLC is a landowner.
The album will be approved, the site plan with the, um, addition of the location of the downcast lights in the building, and the, uh, note concerning repair of the Cape Cod berm, if it's standing.
The sign height?
Sign height. Oh, the sign height changed to, uh, nine feet, ten feet.
One second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
The whole, abstentions? That concludes our full free care.
Thank you.
And for clarification, the sixteen foot dimension for height of the sign is allowed on the building.
Down the building, yes.
You want any of this check?
Deep six.
There, I sorted it for you.
What's that?
Yeah, you went to...
Don't I already have one of these?
No, it was written yesterday.
Oh.
The second item on the agenda is a site plan prepared for Francis Burl, corner of Route seventy-seven and Rockland Road. Trying to find my agenda. Yes, sir. Well, first we gotta get you complete, accepted, and that kind of thing before we do it, yes, sir.
Jeff has some handouts on it, don't you?
He does?
I think I gave them all to you.
No, you didn't.
Yeah, two months ago.
You've had them long enough, there should be mold and moss growing on them.
Had them so long, we've lost them.
Here's what I found so far.
And there is a new site plan, if any of you don't have them, I think I have some here.
I got one dated February twenty-second. Is there a newer one?
Yeah.
My copy, my copy lost revision blocks, so...
This one's dated, uh, earlier than Craig, this was dated January twenty eighth.
Alright, so we need this. Oh, okay. I just grabbed whatever I wanted.
That's the same one I got.
Yeah. That's what I have.
Did we approve this already?
Subdivision you approved. Pass one of them down, sure.
Do you have another one?
If you have one.
Nope, you can give it back.
Okay.
But what I, what I do have...
There's a second one.
Yeah, I have another one. Same thing.
Perfect, thank you.
The only thing I didn't see that's on the checklist is proposed well. Is that on here somewhere that I couldn't see with my little tiny scale?
Wasn't he talking about portable toilets?
Uh, right behind the building as well.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
I don't show radius, but I certainly have that.
Eleven by seventeen, it's real hard to find that.
Yeah.
I looked everywhere. That's the only thing I didn't see that was on the checklist.
Here's a full-size version of what he's got up there.
I'm keeping this one, I got all my notes up here.
I'm saying it was different from that one, that one's dated February.
One second.
So is that one.
That one's revised, uh, April seventeenth, after we went to the zoning board. Um, the difference is that we added berm in here, block view, and a note about, um, moving the existing access. Other than that, it's, it's the same layout.
So the existing access is there now?
Correct.
Is that the, the, the logging road that's being used right now? Okay. So that access will be eliminated, will be returned back to...
Yep, so, um, we got a, a variance to impact the buffer for the new access, um, in an effort to not impact wetland. The existing access is narrow, and it would have been widened into wetlands, we wanted to avoid having to go for a wetland permit. So, in getting the variance for the, disturbing the buffer, the zoning board asked if we could remove all the, um, gravel material
Yeah.
in the area of the wetlands, so that it, down to the same level, so that the wetland could return to whatever it once was, and let the buffer grow back in in that area.
Okay. Are you gonna be removing any of the stone walls?
Let's get the, let's get the...
Yep, we are.
Let's get the application acceptance leads first, we get into details.
I don't have the occasion.
Would you like one?
Yes, please.
Only got one. It's coming in. I think Tom had one. We improved it two months ago.
Do I need to keep this?
Did you go through the applications, Craig?
I went through the application, yes, checklist. The only thing I only, only I saw was the proposed well missing.
It's there, man.
Were you gonna make a note, Bruce?
I looked, it appears that everything on the application is on the plan, so there's no reason why, we've not asked for any waivers or anything. The only stuff on here is easements, up above easements, and deed researches surrounding, so there's no need to have any on here. So, make a note, we accept the application, that's complete.
Do we have a second?
Who else?
Tom Beach. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, fifteen? Yes, sir.
Dan Higginson with Higginson Land Services, uh, here on behalf of Jeff Remillard, uh, Frank Burl owns the land. Jeff is proposing to, um, develop the site. Uh, Jeff currently operates JG Remillard Escavation, a company that provides excavation services throughout the site, and contracts plowing, to, plowing services to the state of New Hampshire during the winter. In addition to these services, Jeff's proposing to expand his business to buy and sell used trucks and equipment. The proposal is to construct a five thousand square foot building and associated improvements for the purpose of truck equipment repair and storage. Repair and sales, as well as a base of operations for the excavation business. When not in use, Mr. Remillard will store, store and repair his own equipment at the site. We've depicted a proposed inventory area on the plan. This is where trucks and equipment that are for sale will be stored. Customers can stop by and look at the equipment during business hours, seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, seven to noon on Saturday, or bid on items at online auction. All transportation of equipment will take place during business hours. Equipment repair will take place solely inside the building. This will allow for containment of any oils and fluids associated with equipment repair. All service materials will be containerized and stored within the building until such time as they are removed from the site. Mr. Rem, Remillard also has a construct, a collection of antique trucks that he proposes to relocate to the site for the purpose of an auction. He would like to be able to have periodic auctions, three to four times a year, for equipment and the like that he has for sale. Uh, we depict parking for forty-five cars on the site, and don't anticipate having any more than that at any one time. And I just wanna be clear that, um, we are not proposing a junkyard. Um, he wants to bring in antique trucks and equipment, modern trucks and equipment, repair them, sell them, move them on. No, no junkyard of any sort, no picking of parts, no carcasses left, nothing of that nature. The site fronts on both seventy-seven and Rockland Road. The proposed building is located behind a hill that blocks the view from the mass, blocks the view of the vast majority of the building from traffic passing at Route seventy-seven. From what Rockland Road, the site is blocked by an existing heavy vegetative buffer. There's currently an access to the site buffer that will be terminated, and natural vegetation will be left to grow in. The proposed entrance has great changes and curves along it, paired with the berm that we're proposing on the new plan, that shield the view from, of the building from Rockland Road. Uh, this proposed site entrance will breach the, the existing stone wall, and we propose to move the rocks from the new breach to the existing breach to fill that back in. The existing entrance will be let to turn back to its natural state, which will further help with screening. And we've positioned the building and screening to the best extent that we can to try to hide this, the view from the roads and the neighbors. So that's the gist of what we're trying to do, and be happy to answer any questions you have.
The parking spaces that are shown here, that face out to the center of the settlement?
Yes.
Are those for customer parking, or is that where the vehicles are gonna be parked that he's gonna be auctioning and storing?
That would be customer parking at times of the auction. Um, he runs the business himself, he's not proposing any more than three employees, uh, but he does want to be able to have an auction, several auctions throughout the year if he has the inventory to do it. So we needed to depict enough parking spots so that if that auction were to take place, that cars wouldn't be parked on the road and such. So we wanted to make sure that you knew there was adequate onsite area for parking. So there'll be no storage, um, of equipment for sale on seventy-seven, he's not trying to gain, um, line of sight from seventy-seven to advertise for his equipment.
Where will the equipment, this antiques, uh, be stored?
In this area right here. Between the building and Rockland Road.
Note nine specifies a sign, but I'm not seeing where the sign is.
Through the middle of the water, seventy-seven.
Yep, that's the only spot that you can even catch a glimpse from the road of the sign. The other, um, the other sides of the property, the, the berm is too high, and the, the woodland buffer on the state property is far too dense to even see it.
That entire area, you've got, um, the driveway, the parking, the storage areas, you see it's all under gravel?
Yes.
Is there any way, about half of this center wetland? You've got a grass line swale?
Yep.
Going around, which kind of protects that side. To keep from infringing in that buffer, is there something you could, you could do there to...
As opposed to that swell?
De-mark that, no, no, that swell's fine up on that half of it. The back half of it is well, that can be pretty easy to...
Uh, so I have another swell along here.
No, in here.
Oh, oh, yeah, sure. Uh, surely, we can do a swell on that side as well.
Just so that it's well defined, so that won't, because it...
Yeah.
If you only have a girl pack them, it's pretty easy to make it grow over time.
Well, I was gonna say, instead of a swell, I, I think I'd like some boulders or something to prevent...
Just prevent expansion.
And I want to see no sto, no snow storage in that area also.
Sure.
While we're talking about that little area, is it, is it a nest? While we're talking about that little area, is it necessary to drive the whole way around it? It appears you're driving.
The whole way around the wetland?
Yeah. You're coming in off Rockland Road, you're going to the building, and your only exit's around the wetland, is that right?
Correct. For the sake of ease of tractor trailers, low bed type equipment, I mean, it's not.
I see your point.
It's not critical, but it's the, it's, you know, a sake of ease for.
Nice turning radius.
Yeah, which one's turning radius, anyway? But I think we need to.
It'd be nice to leave, it'd be nice not to have it connected. Certainly see your point.
I mean, if that's, if that's an end-all be-all, I mean, we could certainly do that.
Our rules don't say anything against it, so we can't really say no.
But I think we need to do something to get intrusion under that area.
We can absolutely, large rocks or bollards of some sort to define it so that it doesn't, doesn't grow over time, that's not a problem.
Before we go any further, we do have an email from Conservation Commission. Said we had a look at the site plan for Burrow dash Rockland Road 77 project and couldn't find a note about wetland delineation or stamp for the delineator. The buffer is being infringed by the driveway, but it looks like it's being addressed with a ZBA. Also, we are concerned that surface water, surface runoff from the equipment that is stored outside, where incidental fluid spills are common. Be managed such that there are no sheens or other manifestations of contamination emanating from the property and potentially downgrading, degrading, sorry, potentially degrading the wetland's downgrading of the site. The wetland rates of high value in the New Hampshire Wildlife Action Plan. So, first question, who did the needed wetlands?
Tom Carr from Reading Land Services did a portion of it, and I, as a septic designer, did a portion, the remaining portion of it. And I can certainly get both those stamps on the plan. And as far as anything that would be sheening off the site, we could certainly do some sort of a concrete berm or something to contain within the area where inventory would be parked in case something were to happen.
Pretty much pitched towards this.
Everything pitches kind of towards the, just to the west of Leech Field.
Right.
Yes.
What is this little teardrop thing down here?
That's the, the end of the swale where all the water would collect and then she flow off, if it was, if there was enough of a rain event that would cause it to not infiltrate.
I mean, you're not doing any spot grades at all, and is it just flat?
Yeah, flat at the end, and then level spreader off. But I can, I can add spot grades to that.
How much of the site's being distributed?
Under 100,000, if that's what you're driving at. It's somewhere in the 80 range.
That's, that's to the tree lines, you're talking, that's not to the.
Correct.
That's all paved?
Well, it's gravel. What's the distance between the centerline of Merrill Road to the centerline of your driveway? 100 feet, I hope?
Now, I don't know if stuff in the head.
Using my scale, I got 100 feet, almost exactly.
Yeah, it's.
I'm just hoping, if you have to move it.
We could certainly, if it's not 100 feet, we'll move it so that it is 100 feet, but I believe that it is.
For some reason, I wrote down Article 24.7, I don't even know what that is.
Buffer strips.
I don't remember that. Yes, in the commercial district, buffer strips. Any new commercial activity shall provide for and maintain a strip of native plantings approved by the planning board along property lines and boundaries, including road frontage that may be required to act as a visual screen and/or sound buffer as appropriate to the proposed development or activity. The landscape plan will be shown to provide for a visually appealing green space that softens the view. So basically, the buffer strip is up to us.
So, the, there's a large amount of vegetation between Rockland Road and the site, and this area right here where we're proposing a berm, where the existing road goes in, would be the area where if you're driving down Rockland Road and were to look, that you could see something. So we're proposing about a four-foot berm with four-foot evergreens that would be let to grow up, so that you couldn't see, you know, essentially anything in time. Without the leaves on the trees, you can see back in there. When the leaves get on the trees, you can't really see much of anything.
What kind of evergreens?
Whatever you prefer, arborvitae, white pine?
Not white pine.
Arborvitae?
Spruce fir, arborvitae, yeah. White pine grow big in the bottom, and bryos die, and there's no screen.
That's a good point.
What about a buffer between the commercial and the residential zone that is both Burrow's property right now?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of woods on the residential side of it that belongs to Burrow, who also owns this site, so it's kind of, we didn't do anything on that side because it's kind of inherent that he owns both pieces of property, that he's not too concerned about a buffer. From the developed portion of the site, you can't see any of this. The proposed building's also, there's a pretty good hump between the wetland and the building, and the building's cut down on grade a little bit, so that all that blocks site as well.
How much of a wooded buffer is it between the state, state right-of-way and the, what you're proposing?
On the state property?
On, on Burrow's property.
50 feet.
It's been, excuse me.
Craig? Oh, yes, sorry.
That area's been pinned out so much, when you talk about vegetation, buffer along Route 77, it certainly isn't much of a buffer left there now. It's pinned out so much, and I would think that there'd need to be something added to it to really have a buffer between Route 77. Because of the location of that, it's a sensitive place, because it's like the welcome swans.
Absolutely.
Down the hill into a historical village.
Yep.
It's also a long way, it's known as the John Stack scene driveway. So, anything that we can do to.
To soften it.
Screen it. One thing I'm concerned about, which it's already been addressed, and that's the storage of the inventory. It looks like that would be out of sight.
Absolutely.
But there isn't much of a screen there, from what I've seen, because it has been very pinned down.
As you drive along, 77 drops down, so from about this point down, the road's a lot, it's much lower than the site, and the site, or it's much lower than this portion of the land on the site, and then this portion is lower. There's a lot of white pines in here, but this part is where you're talking about, it's a lot thinner.
Arborvitae are very frequently added. It just seems that since it has been cut off, that the site we're talking about is very visible.
We can, we can certainly add the same.
If you're driving from town, that's where I notice it. If you're driving from town towards Rogers, and you're looking up the hill, you can definitely see. And the 50, and you're saying there's 50-foot vegetated, or the 50-foot front setback, and there's a lot of grading inside that setback.
From, from the edge of the vegetation, you're right.
And the reason I'm asking is because you can see all over the place, Aspen is wiping out all the trees inside the.
That's because they go 30 feet now instead of 10.
Well, they can take it all the right away. So Aspen cuts down all the trees, power lines on the other side, we've asked all these questions, but the power lines on this side, Aspen can cut down all the trees.
We can certainly add, we can certainly add evergreens along the 77 road frontage to, to screen.
Okay.
What, you've got a longer retaining wall there? How, how tall was it?
I think six.
Yeah, at its height, a little over six.
And what's it going to be built up?
Stone, like natural stone boulders.
Is there a note on the plan?
Uh, no, but we can put one.
I don't want to see those three-by-three concrete cubes there.
No. No.
Waste concrete.
No. Jeff has been adamant the whole time that he wants to make it, you know, as visually appealing as he can, although it is truck and equipment storage, he wants to make a nice, clean site. You know, in theory, there'll be customers coming in and out from time to time, and he just, he wants to keep it, you know, a nice, clean operation.
What's the building retaining wall height check?
Before you need an engineered plan?
Yes.
Over six feet.
Well, you might want to include that in your note.
Yep.
Also include in your landscaping plan that any trees that die will be replaced. The tree police will be looking for another year, three months.
Yep.
Craig, I'm going to recuse myself from this. I just found out that there's a potential conflict because of my employer. So I'm going to stay here as secretary, but I'm not going to comment on this.
Two, two questions. I hope I know the answer to both. Do you want to do a site walk? We all know where it is, but I'd like to, personally, I'd like to get in there, look around. I'm here to buy a million times, maybe.
Well, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that's very good.
Wouldn't it be nice to do a site walk?
You'd actually get out there before the leaves pop, which means this weekend.
Well, I thought you were the one that didn't like the weekend walks.
Yeah. The one to get out there before the leaves cannot see you see.
It's going to be warm. The bugs will be coming out soon.
It's already starting, yeah.
Got a black fly.
So the sooner the better.
See, that black fly's been out all week.
Early in the morning.
Yeah, we go early Saturday, like 8 o'clock every morning.
I'm not fishing, so I'm either fishing or I'm sleeping in, okay?
I'll take a fish to bed with you and get out of here.
Saturday the 29th?
Huh? Oh, yeah, that was in May. You're going to do it in May. Saturday the 29th, 8 o'clock?
I will post it tomorrow.
8:00 a.m.?
Yes. Second question, since we've got these concerns from the Conservation Commission about contaminants off the parking lot, and I can kind of see the point, especially when you're talking antiques, to me, mean they're older, therefore maybe leaking more fluids, et cetera. Do you want to have me look at this drainage? And how it's working?
Okay.
Review it here.
One per.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
We've got two yeses and one for the city. I'm concerned about the contaminants coming to the west, and I am concerned about that wetland stuck in the middle.
He's going to review what?
Just the drainage.
Okay.
I'm not worried about the little minutia, personally.
I'm confused as far as the area that's shaded. Is that paved area or is it gravel?
Gravel.
Gravel. It's still going to get compacted and be pretty hard. All the, all the repairs we've done inside the building?
Yep.
So therefore, all the fluids that are inside the building are going to stay inside the building?
Yep.
And there can't be floor drains entering like that, obviously?
Drums and such, and then when the drums are full, they get shipped out by a waste oil company or whatever the item is.
Notes in the plan say that?
I don't believe so they do, I'll add that.
All repairs to be done indoors, all schools to be cleaned up. Any liquid to be cleaned up, floor to be, garage floor to be sealed, no floor drains.
Gas curbs on the floor.
What, gas codes?
Gas curbs.
Gas curbs?
Never mind, I'll make them do it on the plan.
Just like, what's the name of the do? What did you say that was operation?
Seven to seven, Monday through Friday, and that's what that plan says, and in talking to him, he would like.
That plan?
That plan, sorry. And in talking to him, he said he would like to do 7 to noon on Saturday, so he wanted me to bring that up, so I need to change that note.
There's a big hole here.
Yeah, yeah. Note nine. You need to put a maximum height on that.
Okay.
Now, note eight. Could you define what those parking spaces are for?
Yep.
Fill this with a floor, if you could. Expand that note a little bit.
Sure.
Where do you put your snow storage? Since we've limited most of it, eliminated most of your area. You got a little bit at the southeast corner of your supposedly intersection inside the site? When you drive in, when you drive in on the, drive in off Rockland Road on the left, you got a little bit of area.
In here.
Now, keep going, there.
Yep, there, and then down here as well. I'll add notes for snow storage, and I'll, I'll come up with some other areas on there, so there's adequate.
Did you put the, the recording number on your reference plan and your revised plan?
I did.
Thank you. Is, is Route 77 a Class 4 road?
I'll double-check that.
Pretty sure it's two.
I believe you're correct. Not urban compact.
You want already sewer line on there, going to the tank of Leech Field?
I can add it.
Yeah, it'd be nice, it'd be nice to see where the tank and sewer line is.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Sewer line.
From where to where?
From the office.
From the building to the Leech Field.
Okay.
Looks like he's got the tanker on there.
Where do you see the tank?
Right in the middle of the building on the back side. It's got three little covers on it.
Oh, there.
Yeah.
Okay. I see it.
He's cheating, he's got the big plan.
Yeah, that, you can see lights in the building over there.
Yeah, there's a couple in the back.
Wow.
Do you have special lights?
Down cast, 65-degree cutoffs.
Do you have any cut sheet on them?
Uh, no, but I, I'll deal with them.
Okay.
I know you've got a variance, but can you add the wetland buffer notes just for?
Yep.
The no disturbance, Article whatever it says.
Would salt use have any effect on those wetlands, on these dry lands? It'd be crazy to put salt on gravel.
Gravel dry, though.
Yeah, I've seen it.
I've seen it, too.
Craig, show notes for, what was that?
Wetland buffer.
But it certainly wouldn't, touch that point, it certainly wouldn't hurt to have a note on there saying, no salt use or something on the, on site. Because you really haven't got any real retention at all. Small note, whatever it is.
Onion juice.
Does that work?
Yeah. That's the slurry that they put on the roads now, before it snows.
We can say no de-icing chemicals, can that cover your onion juice?
Wouldn't want onions in the ground.
Well, the Leech Field right here.
So you're not specifying salt, you're just specifying de-icing chemicals?
No de-icing chemicals to be used on site. No de-icing chemicals to be used on site. Can you bring that plan over so I can see your buffer?
You want to start this?
That doesn't have a buffer on it. That has the buffer on it. What's the grade of the road there? The elevation of the road?
Uh, seventy-seven?
No, the parking lot road. I meant the buffer here, further here. This is three fifty-six, I think.
Yep, so, um.
What's the elevation of your parking spaces slash that little bit of road right there?
Five fifty-four, and I have a five fifty-six contour label, so it'd be five fifty-eight, so it'd be a four foot, uh, four foot burn, and then four foot trees on top of it, so in theory, you'd get eight feet.
You make a detail on the burn?
Sure.
You make the burn too narrow?
Yeah, as I say, you're going to.
Trees don't grow.
Right.
Comes up to a point at four feet, the trees aren't going to have any of the.
Yep.
Any moisture.
Right.
Do we need to specify that perhaps has to be a handicap parking spot, or is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Doesn't need to be on the site, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Also concerning the sign.
And there's a number per number of parking places. Always needs more than one.
Just a clarification on the sign that it says it's externally illuminated, illuminated in the zoning regs for signs. It can't be lighted except when the business is open.
I'll say it. John's thinking of, he's not saying it. Dan, you may want to talk to Chip. Those aren't the right regulations. That was changed. I know the subcommittee took that out.
Well, if it isn't there any longer, can we specify it because of the site?
Sure. That's not a problem.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody realizes that, that's not, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that's not.
Really?
Yeah.
Because it would really stand out like a sore thumb in that.
Go with your wood.
Two o'clock in the morning.
And externally, that has to be downcast.
Yes.
Am I correct in assuming you're planting four trees in this burn?
I, the tree, the tree detail is larger than an actual tree is. We're going to cover the top of the burn with trees, but to not crowd it up so that you can still read the elevations and such. I drew a couple on there, but we intend on making it flush with trees, and I'll have that in the detail.
Center to center spacing, whatever.
Yep.
There are a lot of things on there I didn't see. Any other questions, Rick? If you could take that back, open it up for public hearing, that way I can see people in the audience.
Maybe you can turn her off so people can see it.
Like, open it up for public comment?
And announce that they're entitled to go to the sidewalk on Saturday night.
Nobody wants to come to the public, wants to speak? Yes. Come to vote, you must state your name and address, please, for if you'd like to get in.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Clark. I live on, on the corner of Walker Hill Road and Concord Stage Road, right there at the intersection there. The, the proposed development there, I looked at Jeffrey Remler's website, and the very first page on the website says, after thirty-five years of collecting, and I think that's key, collecting, and that's what salvage yards, junkyards do. They collect, and then they sell the parts, and they sell them for salvage until they've, they feel like they've sold all the parts that were, that could be sold, then they, they sell the, the rest of it for, you know, scrap metal. And he's been collecting there for thirty-five years, and it looks like it, and he states that he's moving, okay, and antique trucks, and expurgation equipment, and to me, that's just, uh, the gentleman representing, Mr. Remler, stated that it's a, um, in no way is it a salvage yard or a junkyard that's being proposed. He's talking about bringing antique trucks up to this site and storing them there, and I've had vehicles that I've owned that were, you know, twelve years old, and they're always, brake lines start bursting, the salt gets to them, hydraulic fluid, I've had gas lines go, and when you have vehicles like that, that just sit there waiting for a buyer, you're going to see soil contamination, groundwater contamination. As current site there, I think if the EPA went in there and did soil samples, they find heavy metals and solvents, petroleum products on, on there in the soil and probably getting in the river. You can look at a Google or a view of the site there and see that there's a river right there. I don't know how it's been allowed to be there for that long without it being addressed, because it's, I think, probably because if you look at the site, it's somewhat of a dip, and it's more like a office, business park type situation. Site up here is totally a different site altogether, and I'm not really concerned about what's happened in the past or what selectmen may have allowed in the past or whatever, but this is a whole nother thing here, and it's like you stated, sir, that this is on a, the state of New Hampshire considers this a scenic byway, and unless we want the, the Route 77, Concord Stage Road is actually probably the most scenic entrance into the town of Ware. When you drive in from Concord, I think everybody would agree with that, and if we don't want it to look like Purnardville, Mass Road and Purnardville, this is where, this, this type of thing is where, this is how it happens, one development at a time, and so I have some comments that I'd like to make with specific concerns that you could copy. I'm not a public speaker, but I'm, I just, I'm going to read from this so I don't lose my train of thought, but, um, I, I've tried to be objective about it. I don't believe it's an honest representation of what will take place on the property. He is stating that's not going to be a junkyard. That's what the business has been, and he's stating that he's moving, and you can see it on his website. You can look through the website, and there's clearly pictures of antique equipment, which, I don't need to go through that, but I think all of you guys have seen, you can look at a Google Earth view, any court judge or anybody would declare it's been a salvage yard and a junkyard selling parts off of antique trucks, piece by piece, that's, and, and so if a person wants to take the best equipment they have, put it out in front, and then put the junk stuff behind while it's being parted out, that's what basically all antique or salvage yards and junkyards do, and they'll take the better equipment and put it out front, and then put the rest of the stuff kind of in the back. Nobody ever wants to call what they have a junkyard or salvage yard, because then, you know, they, it's, they want to skirt zoning and regulations, and, but I don't believe it's an honest application. His present business in South Ware is actually a salvage yard, a junkyard of old trucks and expurgation equipment, which I don't think is a legal use of the property according to town zoning and regulation. I think he felt that he could purchase a property, strip the trees off it, flatten the land, put down some parking surface material, and he'd be in business there, and that's, it is a really visible spot when you come into town, either direction. It's coming into a historic village, the North Village of Ware. It's going to impact not just the Butters, it's going to impact everybody that lives in the town of Ware. There is, it's going to create a lot more traffic for those that live on Merrill Road, Rockland Road, Walker Hill Road, Concord Stage Road, Boebach Road, and Hijo Road. All of those people live within the noise perimeter of that intersection, and right now, the way the roads come out, Merrill Road is actually kind of a dangerous situation because it comes off just a few feet off of Concord Stage Road and then Rockland Road, and they all kind of come together right there, and it's just, it's like a free-for-all there, and adding more traffic, people that are coming for auctions or to look at equipment, and equipment that's coming in and out of there. The problem with the big, heavy equipment making turns there is they're slower to clear the intersection, and then, so what happens, and I, and I've seen this a lot, living there at that corner, what happens is people, when somebody's slowing down to make a turn, people will go around on them, go around to the left of them, or they'll go around to the right of them on the gravel shoulder, and that's a school bus stop. One of my neighbors pointed out, anyone even think about that? The school bus stops there several times a day and offloads little, little kids. It's a dangerous spot. Just this last October, I was outside painting my house, and somebody got broadsided there crossing, turning out onto Concord Stage Road. Cars come up out of the village, and by the time they're that far out of the village, it's probably a half mile from the village, they're already going sixty miles an hour, and they're coming up that hill and not really cognizant of how many cars are coming, turning on and off right there. This is probably something the highway, the State Highway Department needs to get involved. Most of the traffic is because of the transfer station, and the transfer station is creating a, basically a dangerous situation. It's like you can, on the days that it's open, it's like watching bees going to a hive, of people taking their garbage to the transfer station and turning there and whatnot, and the town, really, down the road, the selectman or the planning board, I don't know who would be responsible for that, the town, really, down the road, they own the property all the way to Concord Stage Road, and it's a lot of woods in the area across from where there's a sign for, I want to say it's a Colbert and Sawmill or something like that. The town needs to consider putting their own road out to Concord Stage Road in an area where there's no houses, so they're not, and close off Merrill Road and put gates there. Not, not, and that's, this is my feelings, and I'm sure that people on Merrill Road and everybody else in the area would concur with that, but, but that's, it's another issue, but it's actually impacts this situation because the, on the days that the transfer station is closed, there's a noticeable drop off in the noise and traffic and whatnot, and I live at that intersection. Like I said, just last October, there was a young man that got broadsided there. I heard the big collision. It's fairly often I hear them, and I run out there, and a lot of times, I'm the first person there, and I call 911. He's standing in the road, and cars are driving around him, not wanting to even slow down. He's in a state of shock. He's shaking, and I said, hey, you've got to get out of the road, and I walked him off the road and had him come in my house, and I called 911 for him, and then he ended up taking him to the hospital. There's people in this room that, that have been in collisions there, that live in the area. Their relatives have been in collisions there, trying to make a turn, and people don't want to slow down, and they'll, you can use your turn signal. They'll assume that you're going to make a left or a right, and they'll guess wrong, and then they'll broadside you. My son has been hit there in an accident when he was younger, making a turn. It's a dangerous spot, and having vehicles that, any, any development of that piece of property that is going to increase traffic, especially large vehicles, there's a lot of noise there with the town's road trucks and the winter plowing and, you know, their, their trucks to maintain the roads. I get that as needed. I totally get that, but more development there is, that intersection does not need more traffic, is my feelings. It's an unsafe situation. There's, with, just all the way around, I feel like it's an unsafe situation. I'll move on from the traffic thing, but I think it's going to get somebody killed, that intersection there, and it really needs to be debated whether or not we need to develop the property that's going to cause more traffic, especially big trucks that are making a lot of noise. There's already a lot of noise from all the town trucks. The nature of his business, while people come to look at his equipment, and while he's trying to get old antique trucks running, is going to require that large diesel engines, I notice that with heavy equipment like that, people want to let the engines run. That transmits, that sound transmits a long ways. That isn't going to just magically end at the property boundary, and it's going to impact those of us that live around it, because we can, we hear all the other big trucks that are turning there. I don't know if he's planning on a, if he wants to have a loudspeaker or megaphone to page employees or to hold auctions, but that would transmit and extend beyond property boundaries. Lighting, that's one of the things I'm really concerned about, that, the details on the survey application that I, I got, I don't know if it's the most current one, and I didn't see where they were specific enough. Further up Concord Stage Road, my wife and I've noticed a lot of times we go out to Concord, go out to eat or shopping or whatever and coming back, there's a business there that, I don't know how it was approved, but there's floodlights, there's the used car lot that's Route 77 motors. There's one floodlight that shines, it's pointed down at the parking lot, and there's a mini stories building behind it, and it has two floodlights. I think they're all on about twelve-foot poles, and there's been so many times where we've driven past that at night, and it's the biggest eyesore at night as you drive it from Concord to Ware, and the whole night sky is lit up there, and it's just light pollution that's twenty-four, seven, you know, and it's, there's not a time where it shuts off, you know. Most commercial property owners want to have that type of lighting, but that wouldn't end at the property, I mean, property boundaries, and it would just cause light pollution that would go beyond the property there. And so, security could be handled with, with motion sensing lights. The hours of operation, the original Butters notice that I had, had six AM to ten PM. It's a residential area, and that, that's not residential hours, and there's a lot of us that live right around that, and some of us that work shift work.
Well, excuse me, he did, he did order correct up to seven to seven.
Yeah, I, I heard that, but I was kind of surprised because I didn't have that on my, but I wasn't sure if I heard that right, but, but, so, I'll move on from that, but I, I think that it is a residential area, and, and then property values, and it's going to be detrimental to everybody's residential home values, and I'd like the planning board to think about the fact that his business where it's at, probably, it took thirty-five years to look like that. Now, what he, what it's going to look like in the first year, when he's going through some checks and Chip's going out to check what he's doing and stuff, what is it going to look like in five years, ten years? And it, it takes a, a long time for a piece of property to, I mean, actually, you could probably have them faster than we hope, but I'm concerned about what it's going to look like if, if, if this gets started, what it's going to look like going down the road. And I see this is only benefiting. And I see this is only benefiting the seller and the buyer, and it's just my hope that the, the planning board would consider the effects on the surroundings, diesel fumes in the air, noise pollution, light pollution, traffic impacts water due to equipment that leaks fuel, hydraulic fuel, brake fluid, while it sits on the property and rusts while it's been waiting to be sold. And I hope that the planning board rejects the application and looks after the interests of all the citizens of Ware, even all the thousands of people that live in this town that aren't even aware that this is going on right now. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jerry.
Anybody else like to, nope, I was just going to say, anybody else?
Hi, I'm Dina, I live on 16 Rockland at the corner of River at the end. As Jerry put, my concerns, the school bus, I do have young children who take that bus and get off at the corner and walk, and the traffic there is, the trucks that now are there, and it's worrisome, and I think it's irresponsible. So for me, at that end, I have a recycle, is it an aluminum plant or a tin plant that just went in on River Road? So, the noise I hear from there and the trucks that aren't supposed to be going on peacefully that do, because I see them, so we have that noise, and then we're going to have this noise, plus the dump noise, it's, you know, it's irresponsible. I just bought there a few years ago, and I'm frankly sorry I did. You know, and that's sad for, I get emotional, but to have something that's going to look like this, to come into the center of town, I work for the town, and I think it's disgraceful. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start applauding, everybody's going to have to leave, I'll tell you that right now. And everybody is invited to the site walk on Saturday, by the way, also. Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, please. John Van Walker Hill Road, I share some concerns about the traffic there at that intersection, Rockland and Concord Stage, Walker Hill, that's a bad intersection. I travel that quite a bit for work, for pleasure, for everything like that. Oftentimes, I wonder if I'm actually going to get hit, as I'm coming up that hill, I have to turn my blinker quite a ways, as I'm probably almost at the bottom of the hill, just to warn people that I'm turning, so they can slow down from 60-plus miles an hour. I think it'd be, if it hasn't been done already, I'd love to see the state do a traffic study for that intersection, as it is, and then try to forecast what it would be with additional traffic. Other concern I have, as brought up by Mr. Clark earlier, was water concerns. I know in the past, just recently, the board has contemplated doing well monitoring, monitoring wells, whatever the proper term is, down on the south end of town for a, for a recycling center, if you will. Is that something that would be applicable here? If so, I'd love to see the board consider doing monitoring, well monitoring, for the potential of spilled fluids and other stuff. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
I don't have much to say, except that I think they're blowing some of this out of proportion as far as.
Name an address first, so.
Oh, Frank Pearl, only a butter to the property. I don't see my property dropping down because he wants to put a garage up there. I'd rather see a garage there than I would three, four houses up there impacting a school, whereas they're going to get nothing but good tax money out of this business, providing he does what he's supposed to do as far as keeping an X number of trucks there, I have no problem with that. I ran a trucking company for 30 years, right down the street from there, and I don't think there's a person in this room that has ever heard a complaint about that property. Now, they complain about it now, that's their privilege, somebody else owns it. For 30 years, I ran a trucking company out there, running 10 trucks at a time out there, and I don't believe that there's a person in here that can say that they've ever heard a complaint about that property. Other than that, I don't know what to tell you, I think the guy's just trying to make a living, he's got a couple of kids, he's got a family to support, and we all have a chance. They don't give him a chance, what can I tell you? I guess I'm bordered 1,500 feet by that property. It's a piece of commercial property, I think he's got a right to do what he wants to do with it, as long as he pertains to, you want lights in a certain place, you want the trucks parked in a certain place, that's fine. And the antique trucks, as far as they talk about them and cutting them now, that's fine. I've had a lot of antique trucks myself, but I will say, some of those antique trucks he owns are worth more than the average person makes in a year. They're not junk. They might look like junk because they're old, most of these people are blind to that stuff, that's their privilege too. But, I've owned a lot of antiques in my life. But, that's your decision, that's just my two cents.
Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's Dennis, my name's Dennis Terisi, and I wait for, we're here to duty, we own 14 Walker Hill Road, right at the corner with Big Barn and a three-car garage. I have a, I can give you one copy, that's all I have, I'm sorry. And you can have, this is kind of a petition that people signed, I could go and get more names, but I got 11, including me in my own. But I just, this is, I, this is the concerns of some of the people in the neighborhood, and I'll just read what I have. More traffic at an already dangerous intersection. Excess noise from trucks and machines, also the beeping noises when the machines back up. Hours of operation, well, you've already corrected that, so it's 7:00 to 7:00, where the plans we had were 6:00 to 10:00. Lighting of the business area making it less attractive and more unfriendly. Now, I don't know if he said that the lighting was going to be turned off after hours or not, I didn't hear that. But, I don't know if the lighting's all night, or he's got it turning off.
We suggested it be turned on after business hours.
Okay.
I think he agreed to it, I'm not sure.
And then diesel gas fumes, pollution to everyone's air in the area, it doesn't stay just in the yard. How does this business improve or maintain this neighborhood? We don't see that it does. How does Mr. Romulard maintain the business in South Ware, where they currently are, and will he leave that business open and transfer trucks to the new business? The business in South Ware looks like a junkyard. This will devalue our properties here in North Ware. Number eight. If the new business is not paved with asphalt or concrete, then mud and dirt will find itself to all the roads in the area and the air throughout the area. Number nine. The sign is 5 by 8 on Route 77, that's larger than a sheet of plywood in that, I believe Chip said that, a couple of, I mean, eating back that it can't be bigger than a sheet of plywood. So it detracts from the beauty of the road. The town has a responsibility to their residents as a whole than to the one person who wants to install the business in the cellar of the lot. We feel that it's not a suitable business for the corner of Rockland and Route 77, and will be a noise and lighting nuisance to the surrounding area and will devalue properties, as well as endanger more vehicles in that intersection. And so, then I have the signatures, and I can, I'll submit this to you. And I have two questions on the, on the site plan, let's see, the road that's coming in is 70, almost 78 feet wide, which is, I mean, I don't think vehicles are wider than 20 feet, so even 25 feet, that's 50 feet wide. And I walked it out, I stepped it out, because, because I'm a golfer, and I stepped it out, and it's 75 feet wide, you could cut this, cut all the trees. You can see it right to the left of where it says Kevin Burke Real Estate Trust, you can barely see it says 77.85.
Oh, that's the boundary line, that's what the.
But I paced off that cutting of those trees, and I got 75 feet. That's pretty wide for a two-lane thing, because the vehicles are not, even if a vehicle is 25 feet wide, that's only 50 feet. Anyways, that's my comment, and I don't know how deep that pit is, where you say you have this swale in the middle, how deep is that? There's no numbers to tell me how deep that is. And that's all I have to say, and I'll submit it.
What pit are you talking about?
Where it says the swale in the middle?
The wetland in the middle.
How deep is that? How deep does that go? There's no numbers on it to tell me, or at least I can't see it.
I don't see any numbers, it appears to be about two feet. This is 54, that's a 56, that's a 54 contour. That's probably another 54 contour. So it's probably like two, maybe four feet deep.
Well, you can ask the, you ask the site person right here, he should know.
He should know.
The drain, the grass line swale?
How deep is this wetland?
How deep is it in the middle?
It's a forested wetland, it's relatively rubble across, I mean, it might, it might drop down two, two and a half feet across the majority of it. It's, I mean, to look at it, there's no standing water in it, it's a poorly drained wetland, not very poorly, so it's, it's just, you know, forested with trees and what have you, it's not like a pond or anything of that nature.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else, any more questions? He beat you, he was up first.
Tristan Gordon, 26 Bog Hill Road, I just want to go on record saying that I get the same issues that all the other butters and neighbors have, so I'm not going to go on about everything else, but I do want to go on record saying I get all the same concerns. One thing I was thinking about is, we were saying no salt on the property. Now, he does plowing and maintaining for the highway, is there going to be onsite salt and sand storage? That may, just a thought, I mean, most of my questions have been answered, and like I say, I agree with everything else, but that came to mind. And is there any permitting required for having auctions three times a year? I mean.
To be honest, I don't know, that would be a state thing.
Okay, just, I'm just rattling off a couple of questions I have that didn't get answered while I was sitting there. The conservation board had some concern, are they recommending any, like, environmental impact analysis to be done? Or are they just voicing some concern?
Well, I lost it, but I wrote it in the back. I read the whole thing out loud, but it says, we are concerned that the surface runoff from the equipment that is stored outside, where incidental fluids spills are common, be managed such that no sheens or other manifestations are emanating from property and potentially downgrading, degrading the wetlands downgraded. So they aren't saying, they're saying they have a concern.
So are they recommend, and that's, I just am wondering if they're recommending that, you know, environmental impact analysis be done, or are they just, they didn't get that detailed?
They typically don't, they're giving us a concern of the, degrading the wetlands downgraded, and they pointed out.
Can you have that copy of that, of that email?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But the wetland board is a.
It's an advisory board.
Correct.
Correct.
I was trying to think of the word, thank you.
Okay, so like I say, I got all the same concerns, just one, you know, all the other questions I had are getting answered, but thanks for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just had a question.
Oh, you got to go.
A question and a response. The question being that there is this proposed, a dump, the dump, and I don't, is it a tin recycle? I don't know exactly what it is down on River Road.
Metal recycling.
Metal recycling, is that, because it's residential in the middle, is that an industrial park? And are we, what considers, what, you know, is an industrial park? We have major trucking.
Let's back up.
Well, that's the question, is it an industrial park, and should there be residents, should, you know, living in the center of that?
You're comparing this site to.
All three, because it's 1, 2, 3, it's on the road. I'm on Rockland.
Okay.
And it's a lot of noise, and just in response, I don't know what it was in the past with noise, as I'm there a few years, but I could tell you the noise of the trucks and the sound pollution is during, you know, at any hour, at 7:00 to 7:00, you know, you have kids, you're trying to do homework, you're trying to do stuff, it's loud. You're going to have more noise and being loud, so whether it was quiet at some point, it's not now, and it's going to get a lot noisier. And I do think people have the right to, you know, all businesses, but at the expense of.
It's going to be a true report, I think it is.
Many roads that, about this, being Rockland, Merrill, Concord Stage, Walker Hill, at the expense of all of those residents, I don't think one business.
Is this property is owned commercial? The property you're talking about on River Road, this map shows a commercial, but I believe it was industrial.
It's industrial.
Yes.
The purple thing.
That's red.
Yeah, you got the old map.
I know. I remembered it was, my map was wrong.
Industrial.
Romero's Recycling was, is owned industrial, this is owned commercial, and most of the properties around this intersection are commercial.
Thank you.
Was that your question?
It was, I was curious about that. Just on last night note, like I said, I just don't believe one business with many residents between all of that, if we could reconsider, you know, it's already been deforested quite a bit, so it looks awful going on my road and going into the center of town. So, just something to consider, the good of the whole town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I knew somebody else had it, yeah.
My name's Mike McNally, and I'm one of the butters, I live on 18 Hejo Road, and I just wanted to be on record that I agree with the concerns of all the butters, and I just don't see what value this is really going to bring, the town of Ware, and very concerned about the issues, safety issues, and impact it's going to have on property values of the entire town. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Erin Pike, I live on 19 Hejo Road, so I'm not that far off of Bog Hill. I agree with all of the concerns that were brought up, but my biggest concern, one of my two biggest concerns is the, that intersection, I have a teenage driver. I, myself, have nearly been rear-ended at that intersection many a times. I actually, on several occasions, will go down to Salmon Road and come all the way around because people coming up out of the town, like you said, are going 60 miles an hour, they don't notice, or people coming around from the, you know, coming from the other side from Concord, they don't realize. I've had a car, I was going south into town, had a truck go right along the side of me on the right, because they didn't realize I was there, with my blinker, trying to turn left onto Rockland, missed me by two inches. It's bad with the big trucks, where they go slow and they turn even slower, but just having a backlog of traffic there, it is, I mean, every day, it's, it's a risk, you know, are you going to blink your lights, is the other person going to turn first, are you going to turn, are you going to get hit from behind? It's a bad intersection, I wouldn't want to add any more traffic to it. My other concern is just that the buffer's already been cut down, it already looks terrible. So that lovely green barrier or buffer looks lovely, but even if we add some small trees to that, it still looks terrible. I mean, it's been so thinned out, I know there's not leaves on the trees yet, but it has been already cut down. My concern is, you can see right in there, once you get buildings in there, vehicles, everything, you're going to see it. There's no way, even with a wall, or anything, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment?
My name's Kurt Markery, and I'm not in a butter, but I do live in Ware. 425. My name's Kurt Markarian, I'm not in a butter, but I do live in Ware, 425 Reservoir Drive. Just recently moved back to Ware, had been here for a while, and then, like I said, just moved back. I know what it's like to be on a planning board, because I was on a planning board in Sonoma. It's not an easy job, I understand that.
We have openings, if you want to join us.
I'd say I'm tempted, but I'm not.
No one can say that right now.
So my, my concerns are, you know, with, I've also have an environmental background, so I understand what hazardous waste does to sites. I've worked at some pretty bad ones. Aberdeen Proving Ground being one of them, down in Maryland. I'm not going to compare that to this, but at the same time, I know what the chemicals from these vehicles will do to the ground, and how long it takes for the ground and the surrounding area to repair itself, if it's allowed to. But right now, you're talking about a gravel area that will be compacted, I understand that, but that doesn't stop oils, transmission fluids, gasoline, any of that, from permeating through and into the groundwater. And as you all know, groundwater doesn't stay put, it travels. Which means you have an impact to not only the near butters, but even further along down the road, literally. So that's one major concern, I know you did ask about it, but I didn't hear a whole lot about what is going to be done to contain those vehicles that are sitting out on that property, to ensure that there's no spillage of any kind. I understand, you know, repairs will be done in a building, but that doesn't prevent anything from happening while this, you know, these pieces of equipment are sitting outside. I was also surprised to hear, or not hear, that the road agent wasn't called in to find out what he thought of the impact to that area with heavy trucks coming in and out, beyond what they use for the town, because these are going to be much bigger and much heavier, and on a more continuous basis. Which means the impact to that roadway is going to be severely impacted, beyond what's going to happen to Route 77, especially with no turning lane. Again, I would, I'm surprised that the, you know, the state hasn't been brought in to ask them what will happen to the impact with that kind of heavy equipment being present at that type of intersection. And like everybody has said, it's a very dangerous intersection. I've been on it myself, and I hate the fact that I have to turn onto either Walker Hill or to go on, down into the transfer station, because you just don't know whether someone behind you is paying attention enough to stop or slow down. Uh, and I travel that road twice a day, because I, I work down in London area, so I'm on it, and I know what it's like. Noise pollution is going to be horrendous in that area. Uh, you know, I work near the airport, and I'm not really close to it, but I, I can hear what the airplanes sound like on a daily basis, within my own building. I can't imagine what it's going to be like for people that have to hear diesels running 12 hours a day possibly, in that area. Especially this time of year, when windows are open. No one wants to hear that type of noise. And again, that you have the, uh, the air pollution that's going to be caused by those, those vehicles that are running. Again, okay, you're going to have three or four auctions a year, you have spots for 45 people. How's that going to be controlled, that they're only going to allow 45 vehicles in there? And actually, not even 45, because you're going to have employees there, so you're not going to have enough for 45 vehicles. How's that going to be controlled, three to four times a year? You know, I, I would think that the police chief would also want to have something to say about this, as well as maybe the, you know, the fire chief, because if there is a problem there, what type of hazardous wastes are going to be there that they're going to have to deal with, that they don't know about at this point? So, like I said, I'm not in a butter, but I have been in the environmental business, I know what happens to sites like this, I've been on them to clean them up. It's not a pretty thing, and it doesn't take long for groundwater to become contaminated, but it does take a long time for it to not be contaminated. Thank you.
I'm the last one, I guess.
Well, maybe.
Maybe. I'm Packer, I live on Merrill Road. I'm not in a butter, but I'm a concerned citizen, a taxpayer, and I think that your job should be to protect us as well as a businessman. He wants to sell antique vehicles. What is an antique vehicle? When does it become an antique, rather than an old truck? Antiques are generally considered to be 100 years old. I'm not an antique yet, but I don't think, and I haven't been to his facility, but I don't think he has that many 100-year-old vehicles there to, to repair. And if he's going to repair them, they're going to be sitting out in the yard for a long time, waiting for parts. So those are some of the concerns, I've gone through all the concerns that these people have had, and, and granted, you, you perhaps don't know the area as well as we do, but if you're at that intersection on the week, on Saturday, when everybody's cleaning out their yard in the spring, beware. Thank you.
Thank you. I knew he wouldn't do that. Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions. One is, as far as the, um, like I said, I've had teenagers, I've had old vehicles, they start springing leaks on hydraulic fluid, brake fluid, and stuff, stuff like that, and, you know, getting on my driveway and stuff, and having to put Zorbald. Something of this site, uh, what, was anything discussed about having catch basins to separate runoff from, you know, from water, and any kind of study done to, you know, and, and also, as far as the traffic? Question I have, so, my question to the board is, do you, any of you know if anything was discussed about catch basins to catch runoff? And, um, appreciate the comments of, of the gentleman that used to be on the planning board, and he brought up some things to mind. Is the town prepared to put a turning lane there? It's a dangerous situation on a Saturday. And, um, the town needs, as the population of Ware grows, the town really needs to consider putting their, having their own road out to the highway, so that they're not using Merrill Road, that's a residential area. And, and, um, the town needs to, they own the property all the way to 77, I, um, it could be done, and they would be the only ones having to use it then. They wouldn't be crossing, but that's a whole nother issue, but, but as far as the intersection goes, uh, the, I was wondering if there's any, been any town studies, any traffic studies, like the road agent probably should have been involved in this meeting, if there's been any traffic studies done about what the most dangerous intersections in town are. And I would say that that intersection may be the most dangerous intersection in town, it's probably in the top three. And I've seen a lot of accidents over the years, I've got pictures of a car that swerved amidst a, a vehicle, and launched itself on the stone wall in front of my house, and I'm a little ways up Walker Hill Road, I'm pretty close to the intersection, but I've got pictures of that, all four wheels in the, off the ground, perfectly straddled on the stone wall there. And, uh, I see that kind of stuff, I hear the crashes, it's loud. There's no mistake in that, oh, somebody just had a crash, and, and say a quick silent prayer that nobody died. And this, to be, this being considered there without traffic studies, and without proposed, any proposed turning lanes, the town really needs to be looking at that, because somebody's going to die there. So I have a, my question is about catch basins, and then also about traffic studies, and if, if in fact, there's been any study about whether or not that is the most dangerous intersection in town, or one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary McNally, and I'm at 18 Hejo Road, I'm one of the abutters. Um, and I just want to go on record, I am in agreement with other people who have raised their concerns. Um, I, so my major concerns are the safety, diminishing the beauty of our town, because the current business is an eyesore, and I don't want to see that in a more visible spot for our town, and the impact of the noise for the neighbors in the area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Next week, you have a spoken.
I agree with everybody. Out of my Merrill Road, my name's Al.
Anybody else like to speak? Hearing nothing, I'll close the public comment. Um, I probably should have said something earlier, and I kind of apologized to everybody. You put some piece of paper out here, and you took it back in.
Yes, I did, because I didn't think you were paying attention.
I can't afford to.
That's not them.
We do send applications out to...
One from the police department.
We send them out to Conservation Commission, the Public Works, Board of Fire...
One from the fire department.
The police department, assessing any economic development.
The road agent verbally reported on his visit.
Ware Police said no objection. Board of Fire Ward said no action. You said the road agent said nothing?
The road agent said that he would be happier if the road was just a little further south than where it is proposed, but he doesn't have a problem with it.
If you move it south, you're probably going to end up having to hit a wetland.
Right, that's, yeah.
We'll put a big S curve in.
Right. That's why, that's why evidently it got moved back up to where it is.
Yep. No, it's just in case anybody was...
Also, for everybody, um, as far as catch basins and those kind of things, we don't design this thing, he has to tell us what he's designing. And if we think his design meets all our requirements, that's one thing, if we don't, that's a different thing. So I'm not going to sit here and say, you have to put catch basins in, you have to do this, you have to do that. He has designed to meet our concerns, your concerns, everybody's concerns, so...
And if I may?
You're not even a citizen, go ahead.
No, I know, I'm not allowed to say any...
That's a private joke here, sorry.
Yeah, I was here that night. There is a study being done at present by Southern New Hampshire Planning, about the, they're surveying the roads for dangerous roads and intersections in all of Hillsborough County. That information was passed on to the Chief of Police, and it was up to him to contact them for anything that he wanted studied. So I would recommend that if you would like to have your road studied, that you contact the Chief of Police, tell them Chip sent you.
And adding on that, historically, the intersection at Cold Spring, 77149 is the worst intersection in town, by the way. I don't know what, second, third, or fourth, I know that's the worst. Cold, not Cold Springs, Center Three Corners, that intersection. You see, everybody, yeah, okay. Yes, sir.
Um, I...
I know I closed it, but go ahead.
Yeah, I, I understand. Your, your comment about not designing the catch basins?
Um, yeah.
I understand that. However, you do have a responsibility as a planning board, if, if there's runoff in a certain direction...
Oh, yes.
And you don't see any means to catch it, then...
And that's why, that's why I mentioned having a review engineer looking at the runoff, etc., yes.
Okay.
We mentioned that before, we started the public...
And this is also the first time we've seen this plan in this presentation also, by the way, so we haven't, whatever we've seen, you've seen at this point, as far as traffic studies and everything else.
Can I ask you one quick, my question?
I thought I closed the public comment.
You were going to be out there this weekend?
Saturday at 8:00.
At 8:00?
Yes.
Okay. Look right across the street from the site.
You can come out, you can come out and tell us. You can come out and tell us.
I will.
Okay.
I will, I'll break car, no, but right across the street from this site is wetland, wetland.
Yes.
So I think that should be taken into consideration. Merrimack has just gone through a, a big problem with a, a company polluting the water, and we don't need that on Merrill Road. Maybe you're doing your neighborhood, and on Merrill Road, we don't need it.
Okay, I'm going to close it for public comment again. Couple of questions I didn't ask. How high is the building?
I don't know, I don't have, um, elevations of it yet, but I can get that information.
The building, actually, um...
No higher than 27 feet?
Some photos or, or...
He gave us a photo.
Really? Oh.
Yes.
Just a free span, a free span metal building, that's one that, um...
That was just built down in...
It was built in Hennecker, um, it's, it's the same thing that, um, that Jeff is proposing to build.
Well, one thing we don't have is a, is a, is a traffic report from you, you folks, telling us what you anticipate. I mean, we talk a lot about traffic.
Yep.
There's no question what that's a dangerous intersection, but I'm not sure how much traffic you're planning on generating.
Well, we're not proposing any more than three employees. So, in theory, if there's three employees, they come to the site and get whatever they need for the day, and head out. So three trips in, three trips out, in the morning, and then again in the afternoon, not much different than your average house. So he wants to have an auction to sell off most of his antique trucks.
Is this a one-time thing, or is...
He wants to have a one-time auction to get rid of most of his stuff. He wants to be able, in the future, to have more auctions if he has inventory and, you know, it works. He's not proposing to have three or four auctions a year, every year, but he doesn't want to be limited to, you know, one auction and then done. So as far as, on a daily basis, the operations of the excavation company, you know, three employees. As far as people coming to look at equipment, it's not a high-volume, um, operation by any means. He said that if he had one person every day, he would be ecstatic. If he had two people that showed up in one day, that would be a great day.
How many do you have in Riverdale that show up?
I don't know anything about that business. Uh, I don't know what he has going on down there, but I know that for this site, we're proposing this site plan, what I'm telling you is what we're proposing. Anything different than that would be a violation of this site plan, we're not proposing it, not a lot. Uh, I, I don't know anything about the Riverdale site.
Well, is, are we, is this going to supplant Riverdale, or we got both operations going on? No, apparently staying down, even if it's built a building.
I believe that...
The building was not for him.
No, it wasn't for him?
Yeah. Uh, so his, his entire operation will...
His going to move?
Yes.
Yeah.
And he had, he had made the comment to me about, you know, what he has going on down there is not what he wants to do, he wants to, you know, just, you know, buy and sell, and, so whatever's going on down there, not what he wants to do here.
I thought that, uh, I thought this was a building for repairs, which means it would generate more traffic than what you're saying.
He wants to be able to repair his own equipment, and if he buys, um, an excavator, say, that has issues, he could then repair that excavator, and then put it out for sale.
It isn't a...
It's not a repair facility for, correct. No, not, not at all. As far as the auctions go, yes, it will generate more traffic, if need be, we could have a flagger out there that day, um, some sort of traffic control.
You'll get run over, machine.
Not if they're in a police car with, with blinking lights.
The, uh, as you probably know, the zoning law that's specifically excludes junkyards...
Yes.
And if you look in the, how would I say, 238...
238.
6112.
112.
There's a definition for junkyard, it's three pages long. So there's no dismantling of equipment, there's no bringing, the, the, the equipment that is brought in needs to be repaired, take it off, you can't bring something in to take it apart.
Nope.
You can't bring something in to, um, they've got...
Say he goes to an auction somewhere, he buys a bulldozer that needs new tracks, bring the bulldozer in, put some new tracks on it, get it out there for sale, sell it, that, that type of situation.
I think what we're saying is you can't buy a bulldozer, bring it over here and park it for parts.
Negative. Nope. Your website right here says he dismantles vehicles.
That can't, that's going to be on here, that, it's not allowed.
It's...
Period.
That's what it says, it does.
Chip will have authority to put the tie bars for that, if it's...
If you see any dismantling of vehicles on this site, all you have to do is come down, file a complaint with Chip, Chip will go out there.
And since I am not, since I, since I am not allowed to speak, I have to tell you, and I've been through this with the court already, over something else that involved kennels, what is on a website is not legitimately held in court. You can put anything you want to on a website, it does not mean that that is written in stone, that that's what you're doing. What's written in stone is what these guys are going to tell them he can do.
And how is that going to be...
And then I closed the public comment, I will have another one later, but for right now, let's keep it. We have questions here, also. I forgot what mine was.
Somebody had brought up about, um...
Somebody had brought up about salt and plow trucks. His plow trucks are, he has a route, I'm not exactly sure what the routes are, but one truck is Captain Hennecker, and one truck is Captain, I believe, Londonderry. The trucks stay there. The only reason that a plow truck would be at this site is if it broke down and needed to be repaired. He doesn't keep any of that stuff on site. It's all state contracted, and the vehicles stay at, state sheds, and all the salt, sand, and what have you is supplied there.
So you, so you can add a note, no salt storage?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then another thing that I just wanted to point out was that this site's been commercial for a long time, far longer than the most recent conveyances of most of the residential properties in the neighborhood. So, I mean, it's not, the fact that this commercial site's not new. So a lot of the residences that have moved in, in the area, moved in next to a commercial site.
You're talking about the zoning commercial site?
Correct.
There hasn't been a lot of...
Correct.
...commercial activity there is the problem, or not the problem, I guess, but...
Nonetheless, it's still been zoned commercial for a long time.
I do say I'm going to sympathize with the people at the intersection, because everybody who's been to the transfer station on a Saturday morning knows what it's like to get out of there. And it's mostly the grade of Rockland Road is the issue, I think, being fairly steep at the intersection. But there are other issues there as well, people going 60 miles an hour and things. It's not the best thing. I usually leave and go down Rockland Road. Of course, I live in the other end of town, so...
I would have to agree on the traffic. I mean, I go there often. I dread stopping there. I'm going to wind on both sides here, but I think that can be addressed.
I don't know how much traffic three employees is going to cause. Not as much as the house, by the sound of it. When there's going to be three employees coming and going, it'd be 12 trips, I guess, coming and going. Each, going to be a UPS delivery once in a while, mail. So you're probably going, like a house and a half, because a house is 10 trips a day. So it's not much more than a house if it's three employees. Depends on how many trucks are coming in to be serviced, but if they're his trucks.
You're not 16? Where is from section 298? That doesn't seem appropriate. 298 is...
25-foot non-disturbed.
Section 298 is the act of protection.
Might be 289.
I'll make sure I have it right on there.
Okay.
But the variance is the 25-foot non-disturbed.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I'm sorry.
Can you add that the lights will be...
Yes.
Downcast motion, can you add motion detecting?
And...
Motion sensing.
Motion sec, motion sensing, security lights, the rest of the lights to be off during non-business hours.
And the, the only lights I see are on the building?
Yes.
Okay. So really only two of them are aimed, two are aimed towards 77, two are aimed towards Rockland Road, basically. So I'm seeing things right in my little plane.
Just do I have the, the minutes right? Motion sensing lights, downcast.
Well, the note says all onsite lighting shall be downcast with cutoffs. I wanted to add motion sensing.
And you said something about being off during...
Non-business hours.
Not, okay.
Yeah. Somebody's driving around in the middle of the night working.
Yeah.
That's a problem?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay.
I don't, if, yeah, if somebody's driving around in the middle of the night, I want the lights to come on. Yes, I don't want them switched off and, yes.
Is he going to first come to Gator?
I hadn't, hadn't discussed it at this point. It's not on plan, but...
Forty feet.
What's that?
We probably don't know.
Sign size in commercial. Is it bigger than 32?
No.
No. Well, that sign is almost...
It's 32 square.
32 square.
Two sides, 32 square feet.
Okay.
A question concerning the sign. The way you described the business, really, why would you need a sign like that on 77 at all? Because, you know, at first, I was thinking in terms of a repair business where the people coming and going, but if business is there primarily to repair his own vehicles, and most of the vehicles going in would belong to the owner, then why a sign of that magnitude out on Route 77, a little driveway sign, perhaps to say, for in here, might be sufficient?
I had talked to him about that, and, you know, I said, you know, do you really need a sign out there? Because it's not going to be very visible, very visible. There's a lot of trees in between it. And, you know, he wanted to, he said, you know, you can have a sign, so, you know, I want to have a sign. I know it's not going to, you know, amount to a whole lot, but, you know, you're allowed to have a sign, so I want to...
Yeah, but it does amount to a whole lot to those people who live across the street from it, or people who are traveling, you know, going for the beauty, or whether they really know where, as I do.
Okay. Let me discuss that with him, and I can have an answer for you at the sidewalk.
Yeah, it just seems like a small directional sign might serve as proof of that.
And any signs on 77 have to be permitted by the state of New Hampshire. And not in, and not in their right-of-way. So I don't know how far back you've measured, but if you do get a sign, it's got to be further back off the road.
You don't have to be outside, you don't have to get a state permit outside right-of-way, do you?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, we showed it outside the right-of-way.
No, it's only 100, 100 feet. If it's 114, it's 150.
It's 150 or two.
Is it?
Yeah, it tapers, it tapers down just past the site.
Well, I'm just making notes myself. Yeah, I'm going to contact Southern New Hampshire to see what traffic things they have for that intersection, because I'm sure they have something already. Maybe not at that intersection, but I'm sure they got something on 77 close by.
John was, he has a copy of the master plan, and it has specific areas with traffic hazards. They don't identify that one, but that's pretty old as well.
And that is a horrendous intersection, very poorly laid out. I'd been hit, not right there, but in that vicinity.
It's not one of the better intersections in town. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, one of the things I was thinking that came up when this gentleman was speaking, that we would have to go through the state, but I know on, on Route 114, between Reservoir Drive, just a little up from there, that's 35 miles per hour, and, and at one point, it actually increased to 50, and then went back to 30 as you were entering town. And we were able to get that changed, so it's 35 all the way from Reservoir Drive until it becomes 30 going into the village. So maybe we should look at moving the 50 mile per hour sign from just beyond River Road to just beyond the intersection with Rockland Road, and we keep the traffic at 35. Up that hill, we'll slow it to 35 going down, so we'll cool the speed at that intersection. Not an easy task, because it has to be done by the state, but...
And that's all, that's all in theory, as far as the slowing down of traffic.
Then you have to force it.
It's a good thought, absolutely.
Yeah, you're right, but it will help.
Can't hurt.
It will more than going down.
What is the point of the make?
Yeah, I want to, can you give us whatever you want to give us for Steve Keach to review?
Yes.
And his fee gets paid for by your applicant, of course.
Yep.
Anything else we want to do between now and then? Have him do between now and then?
It'll take a quarter while to transfer down this.
Yeah, if we get a new plan, I'm going to be in trouble. I start crossing out the ones that are, that are valid. Yeah, I think, I think we can continue until May and at our sidewalk. If we have any more questions between now and then, we can certainly bring them up at that.
Want to bring them back on the 13th, or go to the end of the month?
Do you have a part in Keach already?
Yeah, end of the month for Keach.
Make one for...
Is that today?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, staying? See you Saturday?
A note to the concerned citizens.
I was going to say, on the next meeting, you do not get any more notices. It'll be here on the May 25th, is that what we said?
We're welcome Saturday.
Oh, you're welcome all the time, but yes, Saturday and next week, in a month also.
Are those home sites that are going to be made available? Will we be able to get those tomorrow, or...
Hopefully, the minutes will be on the website in a week or so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to get Davis.
We're going to go by your place and get them.
I would suggest we drop the minutes until...
Yes, I agree.
Please, minor, please.
What's that, the 13 events?
Minutes for this.
The public vote, probably.
No, get it within the, what the law, the, the law, the...
Did you have that?
Yeah, I got this.
Is there anything else we need to talk about?
No.
No?
I'm sure.
Did you make a motion?
I, I'm more than we adjourned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.